Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Climate Change Advisory Board. On Monday, the sixth of October. I just have to go through a few live streaming items for members of the public and people in the audience. The meeting is live streamed via YouTube and recorded. The recording will be uploaded to YouTube within two working days where it can be accessed by anyone. Members, please use the microphone in front of you when talking and ensure that when you turn your microphone off, once you have finished speaking, another member or officer will not be able to speak if your microphone is still on. Please note that council visual equipment may, on some occasions, focus on or near the public gallery. Therefore, those in attendance at this meeting may be filmed or recorded. Attendance at this meeting signifies your agreement to this. If as a member of the public you do not wish to be filmed or recorded, please inform council staff, attendants, and we will try to assist where reasonably possible. On hearing the fire alarm, we will ask all attendees to immediately vacate the building. Please vacate via the nearest fire exit, which is just over there by the door, and make your way to the community square outside the main reception. That's the opening comments. So we start the meeting, please. First item is apologies for absence. Dakota Gimm isn't here, but have we had an apology from him?
No, Chair.
Okay, fine. We will just note his absence at the moment and hopefully he'll join us. Item two, minutes of previous meeting, have they agreed? Thank you. Declarations of interests from anyone? Is there anything? Shane?
Just the usual one. I'm a council-appointed G C L.
Can I just confirm that any declaration on the declaration of forms are always recorded for everyone, so we don't need to keep on repeating them, so that's why we do it. But item five, therefore, is to consider any items in Part B or need movement of A or vice versa. There's none of them aware of. So are you all happy with that? Thank you. Item six, climate change delivery plan, pages nine to thirty-eight. Take this panel, please.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Presenting members with the climate change delivery plan at Appendix One for your consideration and comments. Key activities that progress in the last six months have been highlighted under Section Two, and few of those are increase in recycling usage through food waste campaign, council's collaboration with Connected Curb to explore two new charging stations in Kemmer and West Street car parks, receiving planning consent for two new developments, that is Low Range Road and Milton Place, council officer delivering a talk on recycling later at East Drit Rice Primary School, signing a M O U to proceed with the new caskets project, installation of solar panels at Brookwellside, a general climate awareness training has been made available to all staff through our new learning management system, which will be soon rolled out to members as well. To note, this is the final update to the previously adopted strategy, which will be used to prepare our sixth annual report. And going forward, the delivery plan and annual reports will be based on the new strategy, which was adopted in June this year. We believe that members have already gone through the updates, so we will go ahead and take any questions now. Thank you.
Thank you. Just on the intro first, one thing I'd particularly point out is the high demand for the charging points has meant that we're working with a company called Kent Six Hundred on the framework with Kent County Council to bring in more charging points in the borough. They've been brought in specifically at Sickness Leisure Centre. And with the new centre being built, again, something we successfully signed off this year, we will be putting in yet more there, so that people can actually charge up their electric cars and cut down on CO2 emissions and make the environment better for us all. There are another series of good positive things that we've done as a council during the course of year indicated in the report. You would also note many of the items in the Appendix One have been completed. So it's an indicative comment on the fact that we've succeeded on a lot of what we set out to do. And that is in part while we're changing the format going forward and we're reporting a different way. But any questions on either the intro paper or the table itself?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report. I just, I think it's great that we've started to do talks at schools and that we have some happening at the Girl Guides. Do we have plans to make sure that this happens and rolls out to any of the other schools in the area as well?
Oh, it's already happening, actually. Yeah, thank you.
I think the other area I know that is proving successful is parish councils have approached us to work closely with them. A number of them have approached us to bring in charging points in their areas, and we work with them to achieve that. And we will be doing a lot more work with them. They've got access to networks in communities that we don't have, and people will talk to and work with and engage with parish councillors and the parishes in a way that they won't with the boroughs. So they are wanting actively to work with us. I think that would be a very successful partnership between us and them. Has that approach already happened and are we already working with them?
Through you, Chair. So we have certainly renewed our connections with the parish councils. And what we're doing now is just understanding the best way in which we can engage with them in a way that is meaningful for them, but that is underway, yes.
Any other observations? Oh, welcome to Dakota. Anything from yourself? No? All good. Lovely. Can we therefore note the report on the agenda? Thank you. That takes us then to the climate change delivery plan, the next item. We are asked to note and consider this as the draft climate action plan in Appendix One. Who's introducing this one, please?
Thank you, Chair. At the meeting of the full council on seventeen June, the council adopted the new climate change strategy. Post-approval, a survey was conducted on the Go Vocal platform to gather feedback from residents and businesses as part of the consultation process on the drive, on the draft climate change strategy, where we receive feedback from ten residents. On the basis of the new ambitions detailed in our newly adopted strategy, along with the analysis conducted on the deserts data, our existing strategies and policies and consultation responses, officers have developed a new delivery plan, which is shown at Appendix One, which is under seven of work stream, that is transport and movement, buildings and energy efficiency, low carbon business and industry, waste production and resource consumption, land use and biodiversity, community engagement and green skills, and council residents and fleet. The new plan provides specific actions with officer updates along with timeframe setting out how the council will work towards its climate change ambitions as per the new strategy. Four additional columns have been added to reflect the project's financial impact, carbon savings from the work completed, and the cost benefits and savings for residents and the council. Existing action items which were not yet completed and under the previous strategy but remain relevant have been copied over to the new delivery plan along with thirty-seven new action items added to support our new strategy. This delivery plan is dynamic and will be periodically reviewed to make sure that new projects are added and that actions and items are modified as required. Members are asked to provide their thoughts and comments on the new delivered plan. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Obviously, the new strategy sets out more of a partnership working and enforcement and bringing in more enabling for people to switch over from petrol, diesel, away from cars, a more encouragement of people using cycling. And it's good to see that's coming into the planning schemes who got through, going through planning. But can I just point out on page forty-five, item one point fourteen, there is an item there that we will be looking to do more on-street car park enforcement, which whilst that remains in our control, we will be doing that to make sure that parking around schools particularly have higher profile, parking in inappropriate locations is enforced. And our parking officers do work hard in that regard. There's a limited number of them, but we do get around the borough, we do move them to the parishes when required and at their request. So that is something we currently do as a borough council. There is discussions ongoing with Kent County Council at the moment, who are minded to take back that service. That's something we currently do in Gracia. If that all the boroughs and districts in Kent currently do it. Kent do get some money back if the amount of fines go over a certain value. But Kent feel that they might get more, so they're talking about taking the service back in-house. It's a two-year notice plan they have to issue us. So it's quite an interesting timeline with the unitary authorities potentially coming in within the two-year timeline. And I have indicated to Kent, if they want the service, they're welcome to it. They will find it will cost them more money than it costs us to do it. They won't be able to manage it from Maidstone. But if they want to take it on, crack on with it. I've said that for the last couple of years in debates and meetings. So so far, they're not taking it up, but if they do, it's a two-year notice period. So at the same time as unitary authorities coming in, the car park enforcement will potentially flip over to Kent for a few weeks before it goes into the new unitary authorities whatever set up. So it could be an interesting period of time for street parking enforcement. But anything else on the report? I think I had specifically mentioned that. Shane?
Thank you, Chair. My one is on transport and movement and the new one about active transport for schools. It kind of builds on your point, Chair, about the parking around schools, which I think we've all seen recently in an ever deteriorating manner. But I think the polite thing to say is that promoting active travel is a bit of a lost cause, especially as new schools are developed. And I remember going to county to argue about the parking arrangements of the new St George's Primary School, because apparently fifty percent of the pupils were going to walk. It's eighty-four at the moment in terms of percentage, I understand from the travel plan. So promoting active travel is one thing, but actually it requires your point about combining it with enforcement, but also ensuring there are other measures in place. And every time we've addressed this with K C C in terms of school streets or by creating drop-off zones and that, it has been the usual refrain of, well, we know we're responsible for it, but we're not going to fund it. So I suppose I want that a little strengthened if possible. That it isn't just about active transport, active travel. Because we have a system where economization means people can choose, so it may not be physically possible to get there, because there might not be the public transport. Walking may not be an option due to the distance. So how do we make sure that it isn't just active travel, but it is actually, if it is through driving, because they cannot get there any other way, how do we make sure that it is safe for the pupils, for everyone there? And that when they do park, it is in a manner that is safe for other users as well. I've seen, just even today, some really interesting photos of some interesting parking. Problem is, we can't enforce it all, because it isn't on W L lines, it isn't at junctions. Some of it will be for Kent Police to deal with, because it's actually dangerous rather than against parking restrictions. So it's not just Kent County Council and active transport, enforcement and working with Kent Police as well.
I think some of the problem is actually, dare I say, the drivers themselves. It's not necessarily where people are parking or the number of cars. It's drivers are I'm not sure how they're being taught nowadays. I know, for example, when I was leaving earlier today, leaving the car park at Barack Street, cars were parked in the road going round, and they passed across it in order to get out of it, the car, to go and get a ticket, which for which they didn't need, because they could have gone through the barrier and paid for it there. But they stopped all the other cars passing them, because their car was more important. So I think it's the quality of the drivers in some instances, and that's why we need the parking enforcement to manage them. Cars are, people have cars, we have to accept that cars are out there. But I think we also need to look at public transport and try and improve that. And I think hopefully with the new world that is coming of unitary authorities and elected mayors, with mayors getting the power over transport and public transport, it may well be an avenue there again, more government funding, as some others in the country have seen, to improve public transport and get people out of cars. So it's part of a journey. I think we're going to be on, Shane.
Just further developing on that, and one point nine is a new one about working with K C C to improve sustainable transport links, having new developments. Can I suggest that new developments aren't the only things that need to be served in regards to this? So is there any sustainable transport links? And actually, if we're to truly have a public transport option as a real genuine choice, it can't just be about fast track and the new developments. It needs to be about serving the whole borough and making sure from north to south, east to west and everything between, it's an active choice, serving everybody at times that suit them and not random times after a certain time and possibly may turn up. And when it does turn up, it's a bus that's frankly older than most people's homes.
Deborah?
Thank you, Chair. On two point four in the introductory paper, it said that it's going to be periodically reviewed, the plan, to make sure that new products are added. How often, so periodically, will this be on a six monthly or an annual basis? And, sorry.
Sorry. So basically, what happens, as and when we come across any new projects, we see that if there is like a benefit to the resident, to the council, that's when it gets added. We are not actually waiting for six months or even a year. It's as and when, whenever it come across, we go ahead and add it.
Any other questions on this? Are we all happy to accept the new proposal of how we move forward with this? Is that agreed? Thank you. That then takes us to item eight, the energy efficiency standard, pages sixty-three to seventy.
Thank you, Chair. So the purpose of the report is to provide the Climate Change Advisory Board with a copy of the council's response to minimum energy efficiency standards for social rented sector at energy performance certificate, band seat or equivalent by twenty thirty. On the second of July, twenty twenty-five, the Ministry of Housing Communities and local government released a consultation regarding the introduction of minimum energy efficiency standards to social rented homes in England for the first time. By introducing this standard, the government states it would have three main benefits: to improve the decency of homes, to achieve bill savings and reduce fuel poverty, and improve the energy performance of socially rented homes. The consultation closed on the tenth of September and sought views on the following topics: so setting a minimum energy efficiency standard, addressing any implementation issues, longer-term decarbonisation, and how this will be introduced and implemented. The consultation also introduced a time-limited spend exemption for social housing providers, meaning that the maximum a provider would be required to spend on each property in terms of energy efficiency improvements to comply to now and April twenty thirty is ten thousand pounds. If the property still does not reach an E P C rating of C after this expenditure, the property would be exempt and would be able to delay meeting the proposed standard for a further ten years from twenty thirty, although the property would be deemed as a non-decent property due to thermal comfort. The government hasn't also confirmed what would happen after that ten-year extension. The council's response to the consultation can be found at Appendix One. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, quite an effective consultation. I know I saw that before it went in, so it was a good one. But I think trying to get the quality of the housing stock up is something that is good for tenants. It does deal with the problem of mould, dampness, as well as improving thermal. The two things are combined in essence. So that is a good thing. Yes, it does cost money. But we've been given a lot of government money and support in doing that, moving it forward. So I think that's worked well. Where we haven't got stock that is able to get up to those high standards, I know that we are and currently have got a program, we're looking at that, and potentially pulling it down and building up new stock to replace it. People could ask you the question as to, is it worthwhile doing that? Well, I suspect from the numbers we're seeing coming through, the benefit for the tenant certainly is vastly improved. We're actually getting more housing units on the same area land than we had there before. So it's beneficial for those who need homes. So that works out very well for us. Was there any concern you had generally with the questionnaire that came through, or I think the direction is going in, were you in agreement with?
Yes, it was a straightforward consultation. All of the questions that was asked was reasonable and it's something that we had pre-planned for anyway in terms of the DESNES target of twenty thirty.
Thank you. Any questions? When you say the designated target, I know that is our target. We'd be working to that. But it ties in with the common one for C rating on E P C of our stock numbers. What sort of percentage in rough terms do you think we won't hit C on our total stock number?
We just looked at that actually before we started. It was a really small percentage, wasn't it? Less than ten percent that wouldn't meet an E P C C just because of the construction of the building. These are non-standard H R A properties that wouldn't make that target, but a small percentage.
That's good news. Thank you. Any other observations? The only other thing I would ask then is on the new properties that we are building, we are building quite a few at the moment. I take it they're all starting off as C and above. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, all good. Can we note the report and the appendix therein? Thank you. That takes us then to item ten, the Climate Change Emergency Stand Scorecard. Can't even read there. Oh, I missed nine. Naughty me. Nine first. We'll give that one a go first then. Right, the Department of Energy Security Net Zero Emissions, seventy-one to eighty.
Thank you, Chair. Each year, Department of Energy Security and Net Zero, also known as DESNES, publish greenhouse gas emissions data for every local authority area. Due to the amount of data used to compile the statistics, the data always lacks by two years. The newly published data now includes twenty twenty-three. The method of calculating the data is constantly being refined to provide the most accurate picture possible. It is not unusual for the previous year information to be updated and the figures in the previous report to be revised. The council will always use the latest available data when reporting. The full data set for Gracia is attached as an appendix to this report. The graph shows a downward trend in emissions compared to prior years, with the total CO2 emissions for twenty twenty-three coming in at three hundred and fifty-three kilo tonnes. Gracia contributes about six percent of Kent's total carbon emissions and is the second lowest emitting borough in the county. The two largest areas for emissions within the borough remains the same as previous years, and those are transport with forty-four percent and domestic properties with thirty percent, followed by industry that is thirteen percent and commercial is eight percent. Within the transport category, the largest contributor to emission is A roads, which includes the A two carrying through traffic, which does not originate or terminate within the borough and is likely to increase in tandem with the lower Thames Crossing project as more traffic passes through the borough to access the tunnel. The domestic emissions are dominated by the use of gas. These highlights are the most effective way to decarbonise our social housing stock and the wider private stock is to move to heating solutions that do not use fossil fuels. The CO2 emissions for industry is dominated by gas usage. The only industrial emitter in the borough for twenty twenty-three is Kimberly Clark, and they have been working on their sustainability target and have recently announced a hundred and twenty-five million pound contract with two hydrogen facilities to reduce natural gas usage in its production line, which is set to be operational in twenty twenty-seven. Then we have commercial CO2 emissions, which is dominated by electricity usage. The use of solar PV on commercial buildings or shared solar farms could be an effective way to reduce emissions and cost for local businesses. Then we have the public sector emissions, which shows electricity usage slightly higher than the gas usage. Further decarbonisation could be achieved through the replacement of gas boilers, energy efficiency measures, and increase in renewable energy generation through solar PV, air and ground source heat pumps. That's it. Thank you.
Just looking through the report, I was interested in the, obviously, we're the second cleanest and lowest emission in Kent, which I think is something very to be pleased about. Some were surprised to see the likes of Maidstone, Tom Richard Morning and Swales significantly higher than us. And even Seven Oaks, just wondering what they're doing, that is so heavy in pollutants compared with what we're up to. Partly you can look at the timeline, think that the loss of the industrial units down on the riverside had a big part of our change from two thousand and six downwards. Because when A E W went, that presumably took a lot of the energy consumption we had at that time. But I'm really pleased to see on items one point twelve and thirteen, the work being done by Kimberly Clark. But I'm really pleased to see on items one point twelve and thirteen, the work being done by Kimberly Clark, one of our biggest in the borough. They produce most toilet rolls in the country, I think it is. But their energy consumption, the drop they've achieved is dramatic. So I think they should be congratulated on what they've achieved. And that's nothing to do with the council. We put no money into it. And they've done that because commercially it's the right thing to do as well. Save their money and it's good for their selling the product to save their energy efficient. So congratulations to them, I think. Any comments, members? Activing?
Not a new comment, but I did just want to echo what you said about the fact that we're the we're second to Tunbridge Wells and even marginally so. It's a great feat. So I do want to congratulate everyone that's been working hard on this. So yeah.
I think Duffield have to improve their acting coming out, don't they? Deborah?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think on the transport percentage, that's really out of our control. We can't control the traffic that's going through and plus we have the freighters that are coming down the Thames with their emissions and that's going to be difficult for us to control. So I don't see that reducing by much. But it's not to no fault of ours. Thank you.
No, I think with more electric cars coming, that will improve it. And the better engines the cars have got will actually improve the numbers. So I think the only then the other pollutants will be the brakes and the tyres themselves. Quite what they do about them, I don't know. Anything else? No? Deborah?
Thank you, Chair. Just to come back on the tyres, I did read that they are, certain areas are reconstituting old tyres to make road surfaces. So that's very positive, I believe. That cuts back on the waste in that area. Thank you.
It makes the roads quieter. I know that. I've seen some in place. But unfortunately, I don't think they wear quite so well. There are other problems having the tyre in the road surface on wear and other things, but they are quieter. If you buy a road, when it becomes quieter, you can actually hear the difference as the cars go over it. So it's quite remarkable really. But anything else? No? Can we note the report then, please? Thank you. That will then take us neatly to item ten, which I tried to get to a bit too quick earlier. The scorecard, Climate Emergency UK Scorecard Report Update. Who's taking this one, please?
Thank you, Chair. Climate Emergency UK, which is also known as CUK, is a not-for-profit community interest company which has been working with councils and residents since twenty nineteen to share best practice about what councils can do to tackle the climate and ecological emergency and to encourage effective action. In September twenty twenty-one, CUK undertook their first assessment of all UK councils' written climate action plans and we scored fifty-four percent without our input. In the year twenty twenty-three, CUK accessed all UK councils on the actions they have taken towards net zero, which had seven sections with eighty-four questions and we scored thirty-two percent. Last year, they conducted the same assessment again in order to improve their methodology and clarify the questions and the results of their assessment was released this year in June, where we scored thirty-six percent, which is in line with the district average score. Under section two, you can see the table with each sections and their weightage along with twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five scores. The two sections where we see the score has dropped is planning and waste. The methodology has some drawbacks as the assessment is based on published information only and therefore will not reflect everything the council is doing. Furthermore, some initiatives which will not be reflected in the assessment, if they do not fall into the standard categories, examples are transition to HVO. In fact, there were some areas I observed where we should have obtained a score, but we did not. Another example is electrical recycle programme where another council got a score for that initiative, but we did not. And this was raised with them along with some other evidences, but there was no response from the team. And therefore, the scorecard produce should be read with some caution. Council can use this scorecard to evaluate their strategies and project implementation, adding more action items to their deliverables. However, councils need more support in terms of funding and power from national government to deliver our net zero ambitions as those are the major challenges faced by local authorities across UK. The full list of question scores and action plans for each question in each section can be viewed at Appendix Two. Thank you.
Thank you. I suppose the question for me is how our scores are average for boroughs in the country. How is it Lancaster do remarkably so much better? Are they pumping a lot of money into this to make that change, or is it just the nature of the area they're working in? Do we know? What can we learn from them?
Through you, Chair, it's probably a bit of both. But I think you're absolutely right. There is an opportunity for learning from some of these scores, both nationally and obviously locally across Kent. And for us just to benchmark where we are on certain initiatives, whether there are new initiatives we want to adopt or whether actually this is just down to some of the flaws in the methodology that Sid has kind of already alluded to, where we are actually doing these things, but the scoring has just not recognised that under the Climate Emergency UK methodology.
And just to add on that, there are some percentages as well that, like for example, we are doing that initiative, but they have their own standard. If it is not fifty percent, we will not get a score. So that is one of the reasons. There are so many initiatives which you have already doing, but it's not considered as per their marking. So that's the reason our score, which is reflecting, is not the actual score, to be very honest.
So if the scoring is so inaccurate, what's the point of being in it?
So this is something that is done by voluntary groups. We're not in it as such, but we don't choose to do it. But it's just a tolerance is being used by Climate Emergency UK to provide information. And as I say, it's not without its flaws. Really, really good example is a particular question about conversion of vehicles, fleet vehicles to electric. Now, we have done that for thirteen of our vehicles, but we've chosen with the rest of fleet because it's more viable to do so, to transfer our feet onto hydro-treated vegetable oil. Same outcome, but we don't score because of the rigidness of the methodology. So you have to balance what this scoring is telling you with what you're doing in practice. But it's a useful opportunity to understand and investigate what others are doing.
Fair enough. I think I'm not interested in getting necessarily the highest score if it means doing something that isn't practical. For us to go to electric vehicles on our freighters is not practical. We can't get the engines that will take their freighters, the distances they have to, carrying the loads they have to. So we will stick with the method we're going. It's cheaper, it does produce a good outcome, but we're not going to go for that score. As an encouragement to, I know we've got a couple of cabinet members here tonight for you to go on your respective areas and see what those, Lancaster is doing better than we are, whether there's anything we can learn from them, particularly in planning, that we are significantly lower in planning and land use than Lancaster. And there must be something we can do to motivate our planning team to somehow improve their score. And what is the difference?
As soon as you're going to poke that, John. By and large, it isn't necessarily the requirements of the planners that are put on. It's usually through developers and one in six agreements that are, I'll be charitable and say they are attempted to wiggle out of occasionally because they are, it's more costly to do something that maybe costs more to build, but then maybe costs the owner of the site. In the long run, a fine example actually is the leisure centre that we are doing. It costs more to do, but the idea is it saves more in terms of energy costs throughout. If we were just to build a like-for-like cascades, then the energy costs and therefore the revenue bill for this council and taxpayers over many years would be higher. So it's better to be front-loaded that by making them cheaper and actually be end up with cheaper bills and therefore in revenue terms, it's cheaper to do it in capital than it is to do it in revenue. But, which is just basic economics, but sometimes I would argue some housing developers don't quite see it like that because they would rather not have the costs and then put it on to the people that occupy them. I'm sure we'd much rather we front-loaded that for the developers.
So you think that's the only reason our score was so low compared with that other authority?
I think it's certainly a reason, Chair.
Any other questions? Deborah? No? Anything in your area? I know your cabinet member feels you can look at.
I can look at the transport percentage as far as the JTB side of it and some things we might be able to do with the aging. We'll go to KCC about the aging bus fleet and how that can be improved and some other areas. Thank you.
Good. I know some of the equipment we've used for grass cutting and whatever, we've moved over to electric instead of petrol. So there are some minor changes that actually don't cost a significant amount of money. In fact, save money by charging it up instead of carrying diesel cans around or petrol cans around all the time. So we have done a lot of things like that in our depot that makes a benefit. Anything else on that item? I keep looking this way. All the members are this way this time. They're making life easy. Any comments from officers that you can make on it? No? I haven't been meaning to try and exclude you. You're good? Yeah. So that then takes us to item eleven. Any other business? Nothing that I've been notified? Item twelve, exclusion of the public. If we had to go into part B, there is nothing in part B, so there's nothing further in the agenda. That's the end of the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.